Very good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cumberland School Committee. 7:09 PM on September 14th, 2023. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Rogalski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 8/24/2023. Item B, approval of minutes from the executive session, 8/24/2023. Item C, the enrollment report, 9/1/2023. Item D, the school bus inspection reports, 9/1/2023. Item E, the residency truancy report, 9/1/2023. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Smith? Second by Mrs. Rogalski? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is personnel announcements. Mrs. Dreszek.
Hi. Tonight we have 15 appointments. Effective 8/30/2023, Kaitlyn Discharlis, special education teacher, Strive at North Cumberland Middle School. Evita Hernes, speech-language pathologist, one year only, split between Ashton and Garvin. Rosa Lee Kane, grade four teacher, one year only at Cumberland Hill. Robert McKnight, grade seven math teacher, one year only at McCourt. Colleen Parisi, school counselor, one year only, Garvin and BF Norton. Brianna Ronsley, special education teacher, one year only at Ashton. Sofia Silva, special education teacher at BF Norton. Jackson Sperry, elementary teacher in the success program, one year only at BF Norton. Effective 9/1, Kristen Almonte, grade six English, one year only at McCourt. Effective 9/11, Gabriela Mendez, world language Spanish, one year only at CHS. And then we have five paraprofessionals. Michelle Johnson, smiles at the preschool. Juliana Carbonic, paraprofessional one-to-one at Ashton. Jake Lauren Fitzgerald, paraprofessional classroom, one year only at North Cumberland Middle School. Eileen Noons, paraprofessional RISE, one year only at North Cumberland Middle School. And Aubrey Fanuff, paraprofessional one-to-one at North Cumberland Middle School. We have one resignation, Lauren Hammond, reading specialist at McCourt. And we have one unpaid personal leave of absence for the 2023-2024 school year. Christina Nicoletti, MLL math teacher at McCourt. And then we have all of our fall coaches, as noted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Dreszek. We have a question from Mr. Collins.
Do a couple of questions regarding personnel. How many current vacancies do we have, Ms. Dreszek?
We have nine current vacancies.
Nine, you said?
Yes.
And the other question is, we talked about the last meeting or meeting before about a community facilitator for the district. That's been posted.
And we have not filled that position yet.
Have we had candidates?
No.
Okay, fair enough. So we have to keep probably pressing. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting, 9/14/2023, report out of executive session votes. We did not take any votes this evening. And the next item is vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion to seal by Mrs. Rogalski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Madam Chair. And first up, we have a recognition. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Carbonic.
Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to recognize a paraprofessional that just retired from Ashton School. On behalf of Ashton staff, our students and families, we want to congratulate Evelyn Cordier. Evelyn retired this summer. She's already greatly missed by everyone at Ashton School. She's been a paraprofessional at Ashton for many, many years. And during the time that she's been there, she's formed really, really strong relationships with the staff and the students. She has a very caring personality and generally cares about people. She's dependable, always willing to help. She takes her job very seriously and always gave it 100%. Evelyn never complained about anything, but instead she always came up with solutions when she felt something needed to be improved. Teachers always commented about Evelyn, that she had just such a joy in her face all the time. She always smiled. She always showed care and concern for others. She was always positive and did her job well. She's, we miss her beautiful smile and caring ways. She is greatly missed, as I said. So Evelyn, could you please come up for a moment?
Oh, I just wanted to thank everybody, and I miss everyone that I work with. And I'm enjoying retirement so far. And I'll still be around, I'm sure, to, yeah, to visit. Yeah, I will. I'll come. Okay?
Okay, Mr. Chandler, let's hit it. So first, a lot of thank yous. We have a lot of things happening, opening, and, you know, a lot of moving parts. We want to, you know, thank folks for the start of school, and a lot of location moves, especially at Garvin and Ashton. Mike? So first, I got to thank this gentleman behind the camera. He does the cameras. He does the keys. He does scheduling. He's everywhere. Mike Chandler has been really instrumental in opening the school. Along with him, Mr. Will DeJesus, he's not here right now, probably, but he's, he works tirelessly during the floods, during school openings. He's, he's also everywhere. So I want to thank Will tremendously. Principal Carter and teachers, a lot of work goes into moving from one school to another. It's a big lift, so I want to thank, thank them for their patience. Certainly same thing for Principal Carbonic and her team, moving to the trans. Also, no small feat, right? Taking everything you own and packing up and moving, also difficult. And certainly Principal Vaughn, putting up with us, putting on the addition over our community. So thank you all for your patience. Last night, we had a ribbon cutting. Ironically, we had it during a hurri, a warning, a tornado warning. Or, as the police chief called it today, tornadic activity. So we're in the ceremony, already there, and our phones are going off during the presentation. So we got through it. I want to show you a couple, couple pictures of what community looks like right now. There's the stage with the curtains in, the lights. It's a nice, nice look, the stage area. Those are the seating, actually, for that, that event. So it's quite nice. And I think back to what community was, right? The basement cafeteria, little difference. And there's the group during the ceremony, their mutter. And here's the highlight, the principal cutting the ribbon. So that was, that was nice, to see, to see that happen. And here's a classroom in the new addition, what it looks like, give you a sense. It's a nice, nice design. That's the food service area over our community and new cafeteria. And that's the front of the cafeteria, as you may know. And now the shades came in, so that's nice. We have all those finishes in, so it really looks sharp. And that's just, look at the playground fence, new playground coming soon in the spring, but we have a new fence in, so that's a nice look there. And just, I was happy to see the grass growing with all the rain, so I took a few pictures of grass, so you can see that there and there. There's more grass. Thank you. And also a, a new basketball court, so that's also nice for the kids. Okay. So first days of school, as I mentioned, we saw Garvin reopen. We saw our new addition at Community. We saw Ashton. We saw 48 new teachers come work in Cumberland. Our buses are off and running. As you know, the first days of busting can also, you know, certainly be challenging, looking at times, adjusting times, routes, that kind of thing. We adjusted our mini runs starting today to be more efficient. That's, that's underway. As you may know, as of 9:25, we try to accept walkers onto the buses as we have room. So all that's a work in progress. As you know, we'll be bringing the routes to the committee for a final approval, once we kind of iron out all the kinks. But so far, it's a pretty good opening as far as buses go, I would say. Scheduling, you may have heard at McCourt, we had a scheduling challenge, and I would just say, I have to really commend, once again, Mike Chandler, the admin at North, at McCourt, teachers pitching in to help fix a very difficult scheduling problem. I would say, you know, with all hands on deck, they have really wrapped their arms around the challenge. The current plan will be, we will be starting the new complete schedule on Monday at McCourt. So it'll be finalized tomorrow, checked, double-checked, triple-checked, and Monday it starts at McCourt. So a big thank you, especially this gentleman right here behind the camera, working tirelessly. I can't turn the camera around on him. He won't let me do that, but we really should. But thank you, Mike. We had some water and some flooding. I got home one night this week, I think it was Tuesday, and my phone's going off, and it looks like Class Two Rapids going down McCourt's driveway. The building didn't flood, but the next day I woke up and some people are saying there's a hole where the kids walk to the ball field on the walking trail. I'm like, well, it's in the woods. We really don't have to worry about that. An hour later, they said, it's a problem. Your main sewer pipe? But the building is gone. So all of a sudden, we're thinking, okay, fixing the schedule, and now we have a sewer pipe that's, that's missing at the building. So here we go. But I got to thank the town. Everyone in the town came down. Joe Duarte, Dave Carr, the whole team came down. Every heavy equipment piece came down, and they fixed it in a day and a half. Show the after. Look at that. That's a day and a half. So they put in all kinds of rock. They have drainage going from right to left. Just a fantastic job. And we didn't close school. They, they actually capped the sewer while we're in school and kept pumping it out while we're in school at McCourt. So no one even noticed. It was a fantastic effort by the town, so thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the, the team for that. Let's see. Next up, Mike? That's, I had to climb down to look at the angle. I like that, looking at the, the water going through. Next time it floods, it goes through. Big pipes. So, next. Enrollment, opening enrollment, we're about plus 100, all kids, 5,039. That accounts for about a district. If you want the ride number, the pre-K-12 number, we're plus 83. Once again, always good for state aid purposes. We're getting more customers. Even if we publish this, we got two more at BF Today and two more at the high school. We keep getting more additions, so it's, it's a good thing. So we keep watching that, but right now, you can see the different levels, and overall, you know, we're up plus 83 from last year. Next. A quick commercial.
Dr. Thornton, I'm sorry, I do have a question. To follow up on last week, I asked you if you have the net number of students lost or how many we've gained from BVP?
We asked for the first bill to get that net number. No bill yet, but right now, we're tracking 35 kids back. It was 25 last meeting, it's 35 now.
Okay, so 10 in two weeks have come from BVP, Cumberland residents who are now returned to the Cumberland School District.
Correct, we're at 35. All the net effect probably next meeting.
Fair enough, thank you.
Quick commercial for our next meeting. Cropper is an enrollment company. They do pretty extensive stuff on enrollment. They did that to help us with our stage due submission to ride. I'll have them probably on a Zoom speaking to us at a future meeting. I can't do it justice, but I'll give you two, just two executive summary bullets, just to give you a sense of it. The first is, our enrollment's expected to grow by 270 through, three students, or 5.7% in the next, like, five years. So up 5.8% in five years. Then we'll slow down, only grow by 3.3%, another 164 kids. But we're going up, up 6% and then down like three. So climbing like that. The other piece, I would say, it's mainly because of housing turnover. They're saying people are selling homes who are older and younger families are moving in. That's what's happening in Cumberland. That's not factoring the, the BVP effect or other people moving in. The high school today asked permission to have more kids come into the CTE. Out of town, we have more openings, so I said yes. That's also happening as well. So next meeting or the meeting after, when Cropper can come, either virtually or in person, we'll kind of have them go into more depth on that, but I wanted you to have that soundbite. We are going up, it's confirmed with the rejection here by Cropper. Next. And my favorite, school construction updates. We do this every meeting, so let's go through it. This is Garvin. We have the drop-off there, just a picture of the front, front door. This is the sidewalk you bought. We did this a month ago. I'm excited it's in. It was an old sidewalk. It wasn't part of the scope. You did that, so that's your, your work there. That got put in. Next. This is coming soon. Also not in the scope. You already paid for it. A new basketball court for Garvin. That's coming in, new hoops and a court, probably in a couple of weeks. Will tells me that's going to happen. We'll have indoor recess that day, Ms. Carter, when we do the basketball court. That's the office in Garvin, what it looks like when it's operating. A classroom in Garvin right now. That's something we added to also. We did all the blacktop, but didn't do the last bit here. We added that in. It's important to make it look continuous, so I was excited to see that, so I took a picture. That's the last part of the blacktop that we added in the scope. Another classroom, second floor, actually first floor, that's first floor, Garvin. And another classroom look, nice clean look, bright colors. That's our new staircase, very exciting staircase A, we call it. It goes up on the far side of Garvin by the new addition. And second floor classroom, once again, the windows really make the look here, I think. So really, really a nice look. And this is the addition at Garvin. They're sheetrocking. That's one view. Another sheetrock view. This is something we had to do after. We had a drain there that we had to go back and put a bigger drain in because of all the rain we've been having, so they did that yesterday before the last rain. That's a six, a 12-inch drain now that we put in, so we had to do that, so I wanted to show you that. It's been covered up since then. That's a new area in the middle between the old and the new, kind of like a little courtyard. We'll have some furniture out there eventually, just a nice little spot. And once again, more sheetrock, for those of you who like sheetrock. And that's the front cafeteria. Just picture Community and I picture how it'll look, right? That's where the flagpole's going to go as soon as it dries out. That's already there on site. And coming soon also is the sign for Garvin. We have a sign that's on order. And now Ashton, just two pictures, Ms. Carbonic, just the site work on the outside, kind of the pattern of traffic. I just have two views. That's the other view. Nothing else notable happening there right now, and now we're gearing up for Ashton, so that's, that's kind of what we have right there. And the last piece for you, just, I know you always ask me about the Garvin addition. We did get news today. It might be as late as October 27th now, they're saying. We're still pushing them to be faster. We wanted it to be Columbus Day. We're still pushing for that. The things holding it up are the electrical panels. They come from out of state, and all the breakers aren't being made anymore, so they can't deliver the full breaker box. So we're trying to push them to get it. So that's, that's our challenge. A lot of times, my experience has been, companies will give you a date and usually beat the date, so that's my hope, but that was today's meeting. Tim, you were there, it was October 27th, so we're hoping to push them for a late, for Columbus Day. That's our hope still. So happy to answer any questions?
Dr. Thornton, could you tell us how the drop-off is going at Garvin in the pickup with the new parking lot, roadway, the extra spacing to take it off of North Garden?
I can start. Principal Carter's here too, but I would say that, thank you to the mayor. We added in a double lane queuing of cars off the road. It takes 20 cars off the road. That helped. And I was observing yesterday, only for about maybe three or four minutes, the street had a lot of cars on it. After that, once they open up the gate and the queue starts, they all kind of pull right into that queuing area. So it worked out pretty well.
Is there a thought about maybe opening that gate a little bit sooner so it doesn't back up as much? I, I know that that happens with the schools. Everybody tries to get there 20 minutes early.
I defer to the principal on that, but I think she's a system, and I, I wouldn't want to mess with her system on that, so.
Hi, how's it going? We would open it earlier, but teachers need to get into the parking lot before the line starts, so that's really the earliest that we can do that.
Thank you. And one other question, because I know that we did a lot of work on that parking lot, and we had regraded it and did everything so that the flooding issues that we had in the past wouldn't happen. Obviously, we've gone through some tests in the past week with it. Could you tell us how the parking lots would stood the, the, the rain that we've had?
The drainage system that's been put in in the parking lot is running all the water to the back of the property well. That's working well. We do have some challenges with some other drainage at the site, but that's being worked on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiorella?
What is the status of the area between the gymnasium doors and the playground, which has always been in the past a river? We had many conversations with D'Amico, D'Amico? D'Amico. D'Amico, sorry. About that situation with all the rain, do we have a river running through that section?
Right now, the river runs under that. If you think about it, they put in that large pipe under that road, all the way to the drainage area. Right now, in the back of the building, in the side, it's an underwater system of plastic pipes that take all the water to the back.
Okay.
So that road now, under that, are pipes.
So, Mrs. Carter, maybe you can, you can just nod if you want, or shake your head. What is the sta, is there wa, is there a stream of water through that area? Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Thornton. And next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, starting with the fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. The fiscal management subcommittee met this evening. We have 16 resolutions for the committee's consideration later on. We have payment in the bills. And just from Mr. McGrath, our business manager, he briefed us, he's wrapping up fiscal year 2023 and preparing projections for 2024. And aside from that was a lot of the facilities updates about flood damage from Mr. DeJesus, which the public has already heard, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next is the policy and procedures subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorella?
Yes, we were not able to meet this past week. A couple of the policies that we were hoping to put on the agenda were not ready. The one policy that was ready, the GE Personnel Dress Code, I decided not to wait another two weeks for it. That's why it's on the agenda tonight. It's a very small change, and we will discuss that later on in the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fiorella. And achievement and communications subcommittee update, we don't normally meet at the very beginning of school with so much going on, but we will look to schedule our next meeting soon. And the district health and wellness subcommittee update?
We are in the process of, I'm having principals submit their committee members to me who are going to be representatives for this year, so hopefully we'll get a meeting within the next month.
Thank you, Ms. Rogalski. And next on the agenda, public hearing, reading of amended policy G3 Personnel Dress Code. Mr. Fiorella?
Yes, I would just ask that the amended version of this policy be read into the record.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fiorella. And then we have public comments related to that specific dress code. If anyone from the public would like to comment on G3 Personnel Dress Code. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is our general comments from the public. If anyone from the public would like to make any comments, you can come up to the microphone. Looks like we might have a little line. So please state your name and your address, and go ahead.
Hi, Michelle Carter, principal at Garvin. I live at 185 Reservoir Street in North Attleboro. So Dr. Thornton has recognized a lot of people tonight for all their hard work to get our buildings open for the beginning of the year, but we wanted to take a moment to express our appreciation for him and everything that he has done. And I wanted to make everyone on the committee aware of the work that he has put in. He has been at Garvin almost every single day. When it was go time to get into that building, he was there sunup to sundown, moving boxes. We spent a lot of time in storage crates, moving things in, moving things out. And I, I don't think everyone sees that all of the time, and I know that not many superintendents would be boots on the ground, get things going. And there were moments when he kept me going. I don't know how he has that much energy, but after moving so much, I was ready for lunch, and he's like, well, we just have to do this. And so it was like, oh, okay, we're going to keep going. Even on Labor Day, when, you know, we were one day away from the building opening, first thing in the morning, it was a really hot day that day, he was out there by himself finishing the mulch on the playground. He was hand-sweeping the blacktop to make sure that the kids could use it on day one. So I want to express how much I appreciate the efforts that he has put in. I know that Will DeJesus is not here tonight, but same goes for him. Last weekend, when the heavy rains hit, I knew that I could, you know, send him a message right away, and he, he arrived as soon as he could to help out. So both of them have shown so much effort, and I, I want to recognize them. I do, I don't have a tote bag, but I do have a token of appreciation, so I, I would like to present that token of appreciation, if that's okay.
Yes, so Dr. Thornton, I think you should go down to the microphone. Yes, we do want to see it.
So there are two things in here. We have a school theme every year that, and this year's school theme is, there's no place like home, because we are back in our building. And so one of our T-shirts is our Garvin shirt for the year. And then the other T-shirt, just to recognize all the work that they've done, it's Will and Phil's Moving Company.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Nidia Carbonic, Principal of Ashton Elementary School and the Cumberland Preschool Center, 7 Valley Stream Drive, here in Cumberland. I'm here as well, on behalf of Ashton School, to give a big shout-out to Dr. Thornton. Not only was moving here to the trans a huge undertake and lots of work, he was very proactive in making sure we had everything we needed, approving everything, just pushing everyone so that we can get everything that we needed to make the move, and that was a big help because we were stressing about, you know, coming here and, you know, packing last minute while we still had kids in school, and so it was very stressful for us, and knowing that he had our back was, was a huge help, because he was pushing for, you know, for us to have everything we needed. But, you know, just to top it all up, you know, because he's always so hands-on, last Friday, we had to move two, four classrooms, we had to flap them so that they had to switch places, and it was, again, another big undertake, as the teachers had already set up their rooms, and it was extremely hot. We had to get it all done, move all the furniture in one day to be ready, at the end of the day on Friday, to be ready for Monday, so when the kids came in, the rooms will already be switched. And Dr. Thornton rolled up his sleeves, was here right at dismissal time, ready to move furniture, and when I looked, he's carrying a table on his back, down the hallway he goes, and you could not keep up with him. I took a picture, but all you see is table, because he literally had it on his back as he's carrying it down the hallway. So, you know, he's very hands-on, and we truly appreciate that. He walks the walk with us. He knows the hard work. It was hot that day, and he did not hesitate to be there with us, doing what we had to do to take care of the kids and the teachers to be ready for that Monday. He met with the teachers personally, wanted to apologize for what happened, asked to see what they needed, make sure that they had everything they asked for, that we could make it possible without, you know, being more painful than it already was, after they had already set up the rooms and we had to swap. So thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. We truly appreciate all the work you do, so it's a big shout-out to you from Ashton.
Thank you. I can echo everything that my colleagues have just said. My name is Cheryl Vaughn, principal of Community School, 15 Vivian Avenue, Cumberland. Dr. Phil, we appreciate you so much. From a, from a personal perspective, the building expansion at Community, when it was added to my role, I felt like a fish out of water. I started attending the meetings, hearing about GFCIs, ONMs, RFIs, RTUs. I was convinced I was in a foreign country. But there was Dr. Thornton at each one of those meetings, always a nod across the table and a word of encouragement to help me feel more confident in this foreign environment. Additionally, while we were planning the renovations to Community, Dr. Thornton consistently advocated for each detail to be addressed. He heard the needs of the faculty and my thoughts as well, and he was a strong advocate to make sure that we were providing the very best for our students. So on behalf of the Community School faculty, families, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Thornton,
you, Dr. Thornton, for your tireless dedication to each of us. Thank you. Well, ladies, I have never seen him as red as he is right now in my life. Thank you very much for taking the time to be here tonight and acknowledge Dr. Thornton. All right. Next. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Green, 76 Heinz Road in Cumberland. I have three students in Cumberland Schools, one at the high school, one at McCourt, and one at Garvin. I wanted to express in person versus another email communication about the general sense of unease and disappointment about the start of school at McCourt, how it's impacted our students, how it's making parents feel without the lack of, with the lack of transparent communication with the principal situation. I understand those types of conversations happen in your executive committee. I'm not looking for information. I don't envy the task that Mrs. Storm now has to fix this, but there's a lot of concern in that school community. Just to give you an example, my daughter didn't have a math class. She's an accelerated math as a seventh grader. Didn't have a math class for five days, sat in the cafeteria. As of yesterday, there's eighty students in her PE class. There's over forty students in her art class. As I understood it, taking a world language at McCourt or the middle school level was always based upon ELA grades in your sixth grade year. Last week, anybody want to take Spanish? Raise your hand if you want to take Spanish. Plug the schedule. I'd like to know, and I know it can't be addressed here, but in a future communication, if this one, two-day scheduled rotation is going to be kept, what the changes to schedules will be, if it's just for those students that have gaps, or if all students will be receiving a new schedule. But there's a real concern that I think needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, Dr. Thornton, there should be a communication that's going out before Monday, or?
I'm sure I can comment now, but yes.
Okay. All right. We hear you. Thank you. President Kitch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I won't be, I'll just be a minute. But on behalf of the Cumberland Town Council, I also want to congratulate Ms. Kodea for the years of service for this town and for the impact, obviously, you've had on our teachers and our students. So congratulations, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Nice. Next item is old business. Item A, discussion or a vote to approve the Vera Mobility Bus Camera Contract. I think, Mr. Adams, you'd like to open this up?
Thank you. So this, this was on once, but I don't think we took any action because of the way it was noticed. But just so the public is aware, this Vera Mobility is a company that installs cameras on buses that are designed to catch offenders who drive past buses that are stopped. And so they have reached out, as I understand it, to the town, and the contract as it is, is a contract among Vera, the town, and the school department. It doesn't really require, there's no specific cost to the school department, and the benefit is really a public safety benefit for the town. The way the contract was structured, and the reason I'm talking about it now, is it included some fees that looked like they might be allocated to the school department. That didn't seem like it was right because it's really just a public safety thing, and we're sort of a conduit for these cameras because they're the buses that transport the schoolchildren. So I've had communications with the town solicitor about it, and we're trying to hammer out how that stuff will be structured. So it's still kind of in a draft form, so I don't think it's ready for primetime, so to speak. But I do think a vote of the school committee that says in general terms, you know, the school committee supports the concept of having these cameras on the buses for this purpose would be something that at least the town and the town council, who will, I think, also be addressing this contract, can do. But there are some things that need to be hammered out, so it would have to come back to us. But I think a vote that just says, you know, assuming that is something that the school committee supports, that they support the concept of doing something like this, the contract will have to come back to you for final approval once we hammer out some of the details.
The item is on the agenda as to approve the contract, and I know that we're not in a position tonight to necessarily approve it for a variety of reasons, some of which you just.
Yeah. So, you know, it's on, it's close enough from my perspective legally to do a vote that is not to approve the contract, but to approve the concept of having such a contract. I think that that's fine. You don't have to. You could take no action. You don't, you can do whatever you want. But when I spoke to the town solicitor, I suggested, "Listen, I don't think we're in a position to approve the contract because it's redlined." So the most that we could possibly do is this. I don't have any strong feelings about it. It's not like it's gonna hurt my feelings if the school committee takes no action. That's certainly fine with me. So it's up to you guys, however you want to proceed.
Comments from the school committee?
Sure.
Mr. Collins?
We already voted on something similar to this. I know there was some language, and it was tabled on the town side. But I would be prepared to pass this because even, if we approve it, it wouldn't go into effect until the town approves it anyway. So.
There's not a contract to, there's not a contract to approve, a final contract to approve right now?
That's what I'm saying. So tabling it, it's more of a symbolic gesture, but I think the final say would correct, if I'm wrong, would be on the town side, correct?
We have to, we will have to approve.
Yeah. So I'll make that motion to approve?
Oh. Do we have a second? Okay. The motion fails. Mrs. Feather makes a motion to table. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Second. Mr. Fiorella?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. We just have to have a completed and very clear contract in front of us before we can actually approve anything. As Mr. Collins stated, we did approve the concept already. So I would just, you know, wait until Mr. Adams and the town is settled.
So we have a motion to table and a second for discussion. Any other comments from the school committee? Mrs. Rogowski?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Mr. Fiorella said. I think we're all in favor of it, and we all support the idea. But I don't think any of us want to approve anything until we have a final version. But it is, I mean, I don't, I'll speak for myself. I'm very much in favor of it for the town to approve it, but I'm not going to officially approve anything right now.
And discussion, Mr. Collins?
Whenever this, what's the, Dr. Thornton, do you know, or maybe Mr. Adams, what's the turnaround? I mean, because I think the bottom line is we need cameras on these buses. What is the, what is the turnaround on getting the cameras on the buses as we iron this out?
I don't have an exact number, but I'd say it's in the weeks, not days.
Okay. So we have a motion to table by Mrs. Feather and a second by Mr. Fiorella. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. It looks like a lot, but I promise we will get through this. And the first item, Item A, discussion or a vote for the Cumberland School Department to submit a Stage Two Necessity of School Construction Application to RIDE on or before September 15th, which is tomorrow, 2023, on district-wide capital improvements and/or new construction at BF Norton Elementary School. This is an important step in the process of moving ahead.
Good evening. On behalf of Colliers as well as Torado Architects, in addition to the Cumberland School Administration, we're here to present the Stage Two application for the necessity of school construction, Stage Two. So this does have a due date of tomorrow. This is what we have been discussing now for quite some time. So since we last met, back in February was the Stage One, and the Stage One was identifying the need within Cumberland. So since then, we have identified the need as far as BF Norton. We've, you know, really analyzed that school and looked at the possibilities there. We've also reexamined the capital projects within the Cumberland School District. So from that, you know, we were then tasked with moving on to a Stage Two. And since then, we have been extremely busy from multiple visioning sessions that we had with faculty, as well as additional meetings with RIDE, we've been meeting with the town planners. Also with that behind the scenes, in order to do some more investigative work in terms of what is it going to take to get to the next part, the next Stage Three, the construction, the designing, we hired a series of consultants. We did a traffic study. We did a geotech study. We did a land survey. We did environmental surveys. We did a demographic study that Dr. Thornton had referenced a little bit ago. So a lot of things going on behind the scenes. So we wanted to obviously package it together. It's a lot of information that comes together down to the last minutes in order to have everything ready to submit for RIDE. But what we have today to present to you, as Lewis Torado will present, is where we are with the design of everything. I think you'll really get to see what's been worked on and, you know, how we've collaborated over these past few months to really have a really strong package for Cumberland to present to RIDE. So with further ado, I'll hand it over to Lewis, and then we'll circle back to go through some schedule, other questions, and just certainly ask away.
I'm gonna use this one if it's okay. My name's Lewis Torado. Good evening. President of Torado Architects. I like to start off by thanking you. It's been a challenge in that the Rhode Island Department of Education basically gives a district a year to develop a Stage Two because of the shift from the previously planned sequence to a new BF Norton. We've had four months to complete this task. We're very pleased to report that we're ready to submit it tomorrow. But this would not have been possible without the incredible collaboration that we received from Dr. Thornton's office, his staff, from the Building Committee, from you, Collier. So it's been, it's been a wonderful experience, and we're really glad to share this work out with you this evening. One of the things that Megan mentioned was that we had visioning sessions. One in particular was very impactful for the project in that it included a video that really has become sort of the inspiration and theme for what the building is going to be centered around. So we would like to start with that video, if it's okay.
They see what's happening with their kids. They see the excitement and the skillset they're beginning to come home with.
The ED Hub stands for the Experimental Da Vinci Hybrid Ultra Viva Tech. So it's kind of a fancy, newfangled library.
It exists unlike anything I've ever seen. I mean, students don't just check out books. They check out tools. They use laser cutters to create the thing they actually drew in their notebook one day. It's amazing to watch kids just flourish in an environment where there aren't any barriers.
The ED Hub was designed to be the new heart of the school. We literally took the traditional hallway space, the same amount of square footage, and just made it a circular building so that all the rooms flow around the center of that space, the core, where all students, kindergarten through 12th grade, could use and utilize. This building has about 30,000 square feet. It has eight maker labs. They range from robotics to bio lab to a design thinking lab. It has a TV studio lab. And then it has a traditional power tool lab.
I mean, the space itself is so open. Everything from just having windows, the ability to see in all areas at the same time, it gives that sense of community.
We want it to be 100% functional. Lots of the walls are movable, magnet, and flattable surfaces. You know, the building's awesome, but it's the learning that's happening inside the ED Hub that makes it really special.
It's transforming learning because of the collaboration skills that they learn, building, creating, designing, constructing, all the skills that you would use in the workplace.
We want them to feel like they're working at Silicon Valley or in a startup company. A lot of the ideas that we've developed were from the business sector that schools had never used.
I can remember the first time we utilized the giant screen, and it was just amazing to watch them kind of take ownership of such a large space. They felt like experts. In the ED Hub, we see kids walk out knowing there are a lot more possibilities than they maybe knew about before.
There's something powerful about setting a goal so big that there's no way you could pull it off. That's what our town did in the building of the ED Hub, to watch a group of people come together and rally towards the impossible. And our kids have been a part of this change as well. And so it would be exciting to see what their futures look like as a result of what they've watched happen here.
Okay. No. Good. Thank you. Okay. So one of the biggest deficiencies analyzed during the Stage One for the site was the site circulation. So it's something that we wanted to focus on and really come up with a good solution for how to address it. Basically, the existing BF Norton Elementary School is located here. We show that you have parent drop-off stacking in this area. You also have the bus drop-off happening around the building. And you also have pedestrians all arriving at one, at one point and the conflict that occurs across that. Next, Mike. So then the next step that we took was really studied the program required for the building, the number of spaces, the type of spaces. And this being a K through five, four-track school, we analyzed it closely with your other four-track elementary school, which is Community, to make sure that there was parity, but also that we included all of the 21st century spaces that we talked about. Next, please. Then, then we look at a bubble diagram, and that basically describes the strategy for laying out the building generally. So what we have is each grade has its own house. So the four classrooms are located in a house. It's surrounded, the classrooms are surrounding a learning commons. This house also includes restrooms, a teacher planning room, and breakout room. And we have that for each one of the grades. I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop doing that. So the trick is that you have core spaces such as an entrance administration area or the cafeteria and gymnasium. And the trick is not to circulate through each other's house to get to the core spaces. So they want to be self-sufficient. Next, please. We looked at a number of options, including building at the existing location of the elementary school. But the first option was arrived by utilizing the existing baseball field for the site of the new school. This allows the existing school to stay in operation during the construction and avoid very substantial busing costs that you would have incurred. Next, Mike. Okay. So basically, the most economical way to design and build an elementary school is to have a three-story square donut. The three stories allow you to duplicate the floor plans in each one of the floors, and then spaces which large clear spans, such as the gymnasium of and then spaces which large clear spans such as the gymnasium, of the cafeteria, those are best done on slab with nothing about that. So that's the strategy that we used for this. One of the down factors of a three-story elementary school is the travel distance between the floors. So ideally, what you want to do is enter at the intermediate floor, at the second floor. This side allows that to work perfectly in that there's an upper level to the side and a lower level to the side. So it allowed us to put the kindergartens and first graders on the ground level where they have to be and also those large span spaces. So this is a floor plan of the first floor. You can see a typical house with the four classrooms around a learning commons, breakout rooms, small group rooms, restrooms, and then teachers' plan room that allows a space for each one of the teachers with a conference area and also space for storage, for itinerants, and also for itinerant workrooms. So that's really duplicated in all the houses. The one that's a little different is the kindergarten one because those classrooms need to be bigger to accommodate the right requirements. So those are larger, a little larger footprint. So you have two entrances at this lower level. One is located here and controlled by what we call a student service administration. So what the Department of Ed now wants us to design is two separate administrations. One, the most standard, typical, traditional administration with the principal reception area, and another one that's geared towards student services. One of the things that was learned during COVID is that many times the clinics and school become real important resources for the community. So the way that this is laid out, you have an entrance here, security, you have an assistant principal, you have the clinic with a waiting room, examination room, the nurse's office, and then you have this itinerant office, work area with a separate office. Next to that, it's also an important community space is this Ed Hub. So that we have, in the Ed Hub, a more typical library setup here with book stacks and reception desk, librarian's office, breakout rooms. We have grandstands here. You're going to see a lot of renderings of these in a minute so it will make more sense. And then a display platform, and then the Da Vinci rooms that we've introduced in some of the earlier elementary schools that we've renovated and added on to. And then in each floor, we include special ed. This one is a large space that provides for basically two spaces with their own reflection rooms and restrooms. Then all of this is connected to the house. At the entrance of each house is kind of a bell and suspenders approach to security. You will be able to lock down all of the classroom doors in each one of the house, but you also have at the entrance to the house, a security door which automatically would close in case of a lockdown. And that occurs on this side here. Then the other entrance is another community, main entrance. I don't think we're getting the full picture here, but this is the cafeteria and gymnasium. The cafeteria is here and the gymnasium is here, a lobby. We have receiving area back here. And as you can tell, they can circulate to the main spaces without going through each other's house. Okay, this is the second floor. No? Okay, this is the second floor. Okay. So the main entrance to the building is located on this floor and it is from the upper parking lot, which you'll see how that works when I show you the site in a minute. But the main entrance is located here. You go through a security vestibule. We've developed this new design for these entrances so that you have one entrance for a visitor who checks in a ballistic resistant glass window here, and then they can enter the administration area. You have a conference room, small conference room, so they can meet with the visitor prior to allowing the entry into the rest of the building. And then you have a principal's office, conference room, workroom, and restroom space. The other entrance is for faculty and people that have badges to be able to come in so that they can come directly in through the building and will never be really commingled with a potential threat in that vestibule. You'll see, we're going to show you a fly-through at the end of this presentation, but you see that this entrance kind of focuses in on this media hub space as you walk in. Same house description, Ed Hub, special ed, OTPT, and then we have a large itinerant conference room, a multipurpose conference room located here. This is the gymnasium below and this is the footprint of the cafeteria. I'm not sure why it wasn't captured in the previous light. But then the third floor is basically the same layout with the two houses and the Ed Hub and a special ed room. We have some isometrics of really describing how the houses work inside. You can get a good idea of the exact layout of that. Next, please, Mike. And then the site plan. So this is Broad Street located here. This is where the existing school is. And basically, we have two access to the site. One is at the existing curb card that would be utilized for the buses. The buses would come here, they would stack up, and then you have additional visitor parking here. I'm sorry. This, we show a fence and a sliding gate to separate that bus area because after the drop-off in the morning, that would be closed. And in the winter months especially, that's really good play space that could be shoveled. And then this is the main entrance to the building. The other entrance to the site is located here and this is where all the parents drop off the students here. We have this design maximizing the stacking spaces that we have in order to provide easy drop-off for the parents. The building is located towards the back of the site. We have a 25-foot buffer from the property line. All of the neighboring property lines will be buffeted with landscaping. Moving the building in this direction allows us to keep the existing playground and also provide playground areas right in front of the buildings. All of them would be fenced. We have the fourth and fifth graders playground here and then one through three located here. We have the kindergartens inside of the courtyard and we also have some outdoor learning spaces in the courtyard. Good drop-off for receivables and the kitchen. We have transformer, emergency generator, fire pump, and all those utilities located here. Next, please. This is kind of like a bird's eye view of the project. The upper parking, the new building, the parents' drop-off, the landscape buffer. But one element that became an important design element is that in order for us to get these playgrounds in front of the building, the building is kind of moved back. And so it started to feel like it was tucked in behind these houses here. So you'll see in a minute that this design element of the entrance arch is very important because it really focuses in visually from here, lets you identify where the main entrance to the building is. And we think that it creates a really exciting sequence of spaces that you'll experience as you enter the building. Next, please. So this is the perspective from the upper parking to the main entrance to the building. We have this theme of a wall and an arch, a gateway that you experience at the entrance. So this would be from the upper level, you would go through this entrance gateway. It will have a translucent canopy so that it leads you into the building. And also, it reduces that exposure of a three-story building. Next, please. This is from the lower level where the parents' drop-off would be. This is the entrance where the student service administration is located. This is where the cafeteria is. This is the cafeteria. And what we tried to do is really break down the scale of the three-story building, but taking advantage that this area is where the kindergarten classrooms project in front of the rest of the building. And we have masonry at all of these areas to break out that scale. We use a fenestration shift that doesn't align the windows totally vertically, but it shifts them so that that breaks down the scale of the building too. And then we have ample lighting for the learning commons that's so important. This also gives you an idea. We have a set of stairs that connects this level from the entrance level. I'm not going to get that close anymore. Okay. And, okay. But that shows you the upper level and the archway to the main entrance to the building. And then a perspective from the lower level entrance. We got a little carried away with the renderings. Perspective that lets you look at the Ed Hub and it's going to be like a beacon that will be visible from the street and the entrance and shows you that this leads you right into that space. Next, please. And then we have some of the interior perspectives of the Ed Hub. You have the grandstands, both for being able to see presentations and for informal learning. You have, like in the video, it's kind of like a formula that's been worked out to make these spaces most successful, that the second floor is through railings. This is all glass railings. There would be no openings to roll through there. And then the upper floor would be actually a glass wall that goes all the way around. This is the presentation area and you'll see in this and in the video that from the corridor, we create these elements where students kind of have little reading areas that overlook through glass into that space. Next, please. Perspective from the second floor. And I think that what this shows is this really important connection of this space to the courtyard space. You're going to see that that's very transparent and it's an extension of that space into that green space. From the upper level, you see that the stairs on the first floors are open, but on these floors are enclosed. We include little benches, work benches, and this is where that student hangs out from the courtyard. Okay, then the, oh no, I think we have a couple of more renderings. Like I said, we got a little carried away. Next, Mike, please. A kind of sunset area and we picture this really nicely illuminated individual interior letters for the sign and then you see that beacon of the Ed Hub. Next, please. And then another sunset shot of the lower level, the cafeteria and the rest of the building. We are about halfway through.
Wow, well, comments, questions from the school committee? Mr. Collins?
I didn't catch that. You said towards the end, the full video will be available to the public when? So it'll be ready before the election, before people vote. So people will reference, would they have to go to the Toronto website or is that a YouTube, would they be able to YouTube and see it? Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Smith?
I'm just wondering, so everything that we know, everything that's being presented, the whole Stage Two, all the documentation that's going in, that has to be submitted for tomorrow. We're still staying within that same financial number that we've discussed all along earlier on when we approved Stage One, is that correct?
Hi, I'm Holly Demers from Colliers. Nice to see you all tonight. Yes, there's a formula with Ride as to what they approve in working with the estimates and all of these projects. That's how we got to the number to begin with. So we will work with Ride, with the design, with the estimates, and get to where we had said. So it's early on and it'll shift over the next. Once we submit literally 50 exhibits tomorrow with the estimates and the financials, which we'll continue to work through even through tomorrow, then what will happen is Ride will go through this for about a month. We'll hear something in October. Then there'll be a supplemental request with anything that they need clarification on, additional information, review the numbers. Then we'll have a window of time to respond to that and then the approval would be based on November voting. But the approval would be at the end of the calendar year.
The numbers have already been submitted and maybe the mayor knows this as well because it is going on a bond.
Yes.
For the election. So those numbers are locked at this point because we've already submitted in time or did what we had to do in order to get it on the agenda for the election.
Exactly. So we're, even with the estimates, we're working with the numbers that we know of the money that's available for the projects.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogowski?
I know there was some question about whether we were going to qualify for, I think we called them buckets of bonus points.
Bonus points?
Yes, whether it was going to be three or four or do we have any clarification on that for sure, what we would qualify on, have they made a decision?
There are three that are relatively easy to do. The fourth, we'll be working with Ride to see if it qualifies. The fortunate part, even with the timing, so originally the bonus points were through the end of this year and now they've pushed it fortunately through May or June. So all of the contractual obligations with the general contractor, CM, has to be before June. So that allowed some time too for the district to actually dive into the details of the project too, for that reason.
Okay, I feel a little bit like a heel about this statement that I'm going to make. It is beautiful, like really, really beautiful. But we have really made a conscious effort to have parity across all of our schools. And I don't know if it's just because maybe I haven't seen the other schools in a while, but this looks like a castle.
The intent of the Stage Two is to maximize as much funding commitment from the state. So with the estimate, there will be changes. Stage Three- Stage Three is a different animal, to say. You know, Stage Two is actually, gets you to the design intent. RIDE loves this design, of course, it's gorgeous. They'll work with, to get as much within the budget as possible to produce exactly, I mean, what you'd need. But to say it's going to look just like this in Stage Three, it would be premature to say that, just with the nature of the market right now.
To your point about parity, though, I think it's not fair to ask for parity when you're building a brand-new building, because, quite honestly, the only way to have, otherwise, we'd have to build a 19th-century factory and convert it back into a school. So I would hope, and then as hopefully time progresses and years go by, we would be able to have this kind of a building throughout the town. I mean, I think this is what new schools are going to look like.
Yeah. No, and I can, I can get behind that. I mean, we've tried to make some design elements similar across all of the schools and within the schools, even within the footprint or whatever the buildings that we have. And so I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind, too, as we just look at all of our schools as a cohesive unit across our town, too, and just keep that in mind with some of our design.
Understood.
I think it's also important to note that the school that this town needs to have for the additional classroom space and the additional seats cannot be built on that footprint, because otherwise, we're going to be looking, we would finish all the projects, and we would have mobile classrooms. We'd have to start looking at other buildings that we'd have to rent. And this also solves the very large problem of the current building not being able to be secured in a realistic sense that we are securing all the other buildings because of the design of that building. Also, there is no way to make the current building handicap accessible, so.
All right, Mrs. Vogel.
How much of the design will be impacted in Stage Three? How much of this is going to look like this versus to the true cost?
It's, it depends. I mean, a Stage Three, I mean, I can actually ask Lewis to speak on that. There will be, you know, lots of back and forth in the design as it's being estimated to make sure that it comes in on budget. So it's hard to say right now, unfortunately. Do you want to?
Just that Stage Three starts with a schematic design, and it's a new opportunity to really look at everything, make sure that we're doing everything correctly, that we're going to design the building that you want us to build. So there's another opportunity for Mayor Murray to report and to further define the space.
And to stay on budget.
Yes.
I mean, I should have started last time with, you know, thank you to all of you for the hard work. I know that this was not an easy task to put this all together. And to echo Mr. Fiorello, I mean, if you look at the enrollments, we're up 94 elementary students this year. With the expansion of Ashen, I think that allows 120 new seats. That almost fills the expansion next year right away. So I think there really isn't an option but to expand the school. And I know this is going to come up for a vote, and I know we're going to be doing a lot of work with the public, trying to inform them of what's coming, but the reality is, we are growing very quickly, and as the demographic study showed, I mean, in the next five years, it was 230 more students. We're going to need the space, and so I'm excited, even if it does look like a 19th-century factory that we have to build and renovate inside. I would be okay with that, too, as long as it had the room.
Right. And it's what's really been wonderful to watch in Cumberland specifically, five years ago, when it was the renovations of the elementary schools and how the superintendent in the parity and really trying to financially make this work so it's across the whole town. And watching RIDE watch Cumberland, right? So you started with this really ambitious plan that not many districts in the state had tried to take on all at once, and you've been very successful. Being at that ribbon-cutting last night was great. The rain was a little much, but overall, it was an amazing event. And then watching Garvin and, you know, all, and so this is a natural next step for you. So RIDE, it's wonderful for us to be able to approach the state with a community like yours that have been so successful, because they're like, yes, what's next? So we're really excited about getting this in tomorrow and just getting to the next stage. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fiorello?
Sorry to keep beating this horse, but as far as parity is concerned, and I'm not beating you up, there was no way to make BF on par with the other buildings, quite honestly. We would never have been able to have the DaVinci Spaces that we have in the other buildings, the new, you know, all the new music rooms. There's just not enough space in that building for the students that we have, and also for all the new 21st-century innovation spaces. So quite honestly, the only way to have parity would be to have a new building. That's my opinion, at least.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah. No, I, just for the record, I totally support a new school. We are expanding. There's the, I understand all the complications of the existing building, the existing site, all of that, I get it. And I am here to support this, of course, tonight. I just, as we've said, and Mr. Toronto, you said it during your presentation, too, we looked at some of the other schools, we want parity, we want to look at that. We've worked really hard as a district to have parity from an achievement perspective across this community. You know, we're trying to break this, you know, this side of town, that side of town, all of that stuff. We are one unit, and the best part of the story of Cumberland, the buildings and the schools are great, but the best part of the story of Cumberland is our achievement results and what we're doing. You put our achievement results with these buildings, we are the best in the state. You can't, you can't compete with us. So it is one big, giant, awesome story. So the, if there's, if there are, Mr. Fiorello?
I'm sorry. Imagine a world where Rhode Island invested in their school buildings, like Massachusetts has over the last 20 years. Other than health and safety or health and security, there has been no money made available in 20 years. This is the first bucket of money, or technically, the second bucket of money, that they have done in the last, you know, in a long time. Massachusetts has done six bonds for school construction, and what they did was, they actually put an emphasis on replacing buildings and not renovating buildings. Imagine if we lived with those kinds of rules.
Well, we are going to squeeze every last penny out of this. So if there are no further comments or questions, I need a motion from the committee. Mrs. Feather makes a motion to approve-
The submission, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to say, Mrs. Feather makes a motion to approve, to move ahead with submitting the Stage Two necessity of school construction application to RIDE on or before tomorrow on the district-wide capital improvements, new construction at BF Norton Elementary Schools. Do we have a second? Did you say? Mr. Fiorello? Any other comments?
Yeah, just one quick one.
I just want to thank the mayor and the town council for being behind this project and making this happen.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Good luck tomorrow, actually getting it in.
Yes, and what we will have is a hard copy for you. It's a very large binder, maybe two. And you'll also have an electronic copy, too, for, you know, whenever you're looking to read something. So you'll have it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2023-2024 school year. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski to approve. Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve superintendent's recommendation to accept admission of non-resident student-paying tuition 2023-2024 school year.
Can you please table that, Madam Chair?
We are tabling that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Great. We don't need to put on that, too. We just table it. That's tabled. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve amended policy G3 personnel dress code. Mr. Fiorello?
Change to the policy is very simple. I was asked about this by a couple of people. We are going to allow, if passed, it would allow denim to be worn. And the policy language is very clear about no tears, no rips, no, you know, nothing like that. These would have to be essentially, you know, Sunday-going meat-and-gens. So, but it would allow teachers to wear jean skirts, jean jackets, you know, whatever it is. I mean, it would just free up a lot of teachers. Plus, quite honestly, especially at the elementary level, you don't necessarily want to be wearing your Sunday vest. And I would make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to approve amended policy G3 personnel dress code. Second by Mrs. Feather. Any discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yes, I apologize. So I understand the concept of what's being said about wearing jeans. And, yeah, there are situations where the teachers, they do, they need to be comfortable, they need to have certain items worn, they're in with children, whatever it may be. But I think that there's more than enough clothing options out there that can accommodate and have accommodated all this time. I, I can see where the jeans and the Friday dress down and the changes with the, you know, having that in there and allowing that for everybody, or school spirit things, and having it being able to be worn for those situations. I'm just not quite sure I understand truly all the different aspects of why jeans would be necessary. I just don't find it to be something that is a professional enough attire. And when we're building schools for the 21st century, and we're trying to take everybody forward, and we're trying to show such a high level of education, and jeans, to me, just take that level down. If it's not, if they don't have somebody to look up to and something to go with with the goal, I just think it becomes part of the student environment, and the teachers become more like the students' friends. I guess I'm just old-school in that way. I'm so sorry to the teachers. It's not knocking any of the teachers. I just don't understand where and why, and, you know, sway my mind. Tell me, tell me why it needs to be done.
So, yeah, so personally speaking, I know that, I've never taken a job where I couldn't wear jeans. It has actually been something that, that has been very important to me. But I do feel like we should get out of the business of legislating what people wear. And too often, dress codes have been disproportionately impacting women, and so anything we can do to lighten that and loosen the dress code is definitely something that I am in favor of.
Mr. Collins?
I think teachers, as a teacher, have a lot more on their hands and things to worry about, more concerns than what they wear. The only thing I would say, as long as the jeans are professional and they're modest, I have no problem with this policy change.
I remember when at my company, five years ago, they let people wear jeans, and I was like, oh, no, everyone's going to walk in and they're going to wear their jeans they mow the lawn in. And nobody did that. And actually, people can look very nice in their jeans. So we have a motion by Mr. Fiorello and a second by Ms. Feather. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes six to one. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. I'm going to hand this over to you, Mr. Collins.
All right. Thank you for hanging around. We have 16 fiscal resolutions, starting with SCPR-09-2023-124 through 139. And all 16 of these resolutions pass Fiscal Management Subcommittee, three to zero, and I have moved passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions, SCPR-09-2023-124 through 139. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogowski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolution SCR-2023-03, resolution to pursue collection of unpaid BVP electric payments. And I believe Mayor Mutter is here tonight to address us on this one. Thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, and your attorney, and Dr. Thornton. I always have to say that every time, you know. You're aware. So just to bring, give a brief, you know, update or how you've arrived at SCR-2023-03. Back in, I think the resolution says 20, but it was some, I thought it was 2019, but you lose track of the time, but Mayor Murray had begun some deliberations for a net metering agreement that we took on after taking office and made a few amendments to it, had an upfront payment that we've appropriated towards Diamond Hill Park. And so when the agreement was sanctioned and approved by the council, it was, it was to be spread across the town, the school, and BVP. And when it was executed from the town's finance department, the appropriation or the credits that should have been, the bills, I should say, that should have gone to BVP were appropriated towards the school department. So they took, instead of having three entities, the town, the school, and BVP, it was town, school, and BVP, and enjoyed the advantage of effectively the school department paying the supply side of their energy bills. So it's a complicated process. I call it like hieroglyphics. It was trying to, trying to actually figure out all these credits and stuff, but I don't know, it maybe was a month, six weeks ago, you know, we, we did meet with representatives of Best Practice and kind of zeroed in on the situation, and sure enough, that was discovered. It is somewhere in the vicinity of $600,000 that, and Mr. Prijano was kind of on the scent, I must tell you, because he kept thinking, he kept telling me, gee, I don't feel like I, that we're getting the full benefit of the deal. And he, so he was correct. But I did notify BVP of that situation, and then time has gone by. And so then, speaking with Dr. Thornton, I did reach out to BVP, because I know Mr. McGrath had reached out, and we really hadn't got a solution. They, it took a little while for them to understand the whole situation, and they did come to grips with that. There was some discussion, if you will, as to what the exact number is. But in any event, they subsequently, I think it, I think it actually occurred this week, they had a finance committee meeting. Something was discussed. They have a Monday meeting that is on the docket, I believe, in executive session due to potential litigation. But to make a long story short, I did speak with Dr. Thornton, and I did speak with representatives of BVP. And so my feeling was, we were, we were the architect of the problem, and so we would make, the town would make the school department whole, and then BVP. So we would, we would appropriate the money to the town's, to the school's capital project fund, which we had created maybe a year ago, two years ago. So we would appropriate it to the school's capital project fund, where we would, and we have the audit that's coming in next week, so we would discuss with them, where we would take that money and appropriate it to the school capital project fund. When BVP paid, we would then replenish where we took it from. BVP is looking to make five payments to, they get state reimbursement quarterly, so there would be five payments spanning two fiscal years, two in this year, and then three in the 24 budget. It wouldn't, 24-year fiscal year. So effectively, we would have a signed agreement that that was, that that would happen. We do not have that now. But this is all, this is kind of the structure of the plan, if you will. So we would humbly ask you not to take legal action. I don't, I don't think it's going to be necessary, and that we would, we would make that, we would, I did discuss with Best Practice as well, we would come to an agreement as to what the exact number is, and once that was done, the payment schedule would be, we would sign it with BVP, the town would, and once that happened, we would just roll the, whatever that agreed-upon number is to the, that capital project fund. the, whatever that agreed-upon number is to the, that capital project fund, that the school department. We did have, we appropriated 600,000. We had 300 in the budget last year. You did not use it. So you're still at 600. And after that, you'd be at a million in small change, I think. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Mutter. Mr. Fiorello?
First of all, I say thank you to the town for taking on this responsibility and making us whole. My question, though, is, and I'm not even sure if you can answer this, but I feel like it needs to be asked. Didn't they realize they weren't paying their electric bill?
Well, there, you, there's two sides to the bill, right? There's the supply side and there's the usage side or whatever the terminology is, right? So I, I think they felt that that, they were getting so much in the way of credits that it was offsetting. And I guess, you know, as a year goes by and no one's saying anything, you, you keep, you keep the same, you know, I don't want to say behavior, but, so for them, they have, they have budgeted the same amount of money this year as they did last year. And of course, that number's 200,000 too low. And, and then they have to make up, they have to, you know, make us whole. So it's a little bit of a budget constraint and, and cash flow constraint to them. So, and I do think that, like I say, I mean, you know, we, had we appropriated those credits correctly, we wouldn't be here today. So we bear some responsibility for that. And as long as we make you whole and, and the auditors are good with how we arrange it, you know, everybody wins. I would like to say, though, you know, it's funny, we always talk about the bad things. And we haven't really, this agreement actually saved the town in excess of 915,000. And the school department, once you made whole, it actually saved you 509, uh, 509,000. So we never talk about that. We only talk about the problems. We never talk about anything else. Well, we do sometimes, but.
So we don't have a, or do we have an estimated number, total amount, yet?
I believe your number was 432,000 after the credits. Their number, as of today, they are somewhere around 404,000. We'll get, we'll get the exact number. It's some, it's in that vicinity, between four and 425.
So for those of you keeping track at home, it's 432,000 to the Cumberland schools and the rest that comes out of BVP and goes to the top. But, Mr. Fiorello.
Considering how well this deal has worked, I would love to start a conversation about solar energy projects on town buildings, school buildings, to kind of take care of that. So.
I know, I know you would.
I know.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Smith?
No question. I, I apologize. I was just going to say, I'd like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting, giving enough time over the next several weeks for further discussions before we take this resolution forward or not take it forward.
Okay, so Ms. Smith is making a motion to table this. Do we have a second for discussion?
I have no comments, but I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Collins makes a second for discussion. Mr. Fiorello.
Mr. Adams. Can we table this indefinitely?
I don't want this to happen.
Well, no, what I'm saying, by indefinitely, I mean, if we have to bring it back up. But as long as the town is saying they're going to pay us, then.
Well, I think that we can vote on it. And if, if we come up with a plan and we can just squash this and not have any vote or motion on it, and then it just doesn't pass in the future, just to close it out, right?
What is your recommendation, Mr. Adams?
Oh, your attorney, Adams. In front of Mr. Mutter and everything? I, I think the easier way to handle it, no disrespect to Ms. Smith, is just to take no action on it. You just don't have to take any action. It doesn't mean it can't come back. But I, my sense is it probably won't. But I think you can just take no action. I don't think it, it doesn't matter from my perspective. Tableting can get a little weird. So that's why I would think that that might not be a way out. We'd go, I would probably just take no action. That would be my recommendation.
So if we take no action and something falls apart, we can put this on for our next agenda? Or, right, I, I don't anticipate that's happening, but I want to protect 400,000.
And we can demand mayor Mutter's attendance at that meeting, I suppose. I don't think we can actually demand that. I just said that because of my affection for Mayor Mutter.
Right. I just want to protect the 400,000 and make sure that it doesn't get carried on for another six months.
No, taking no action means you take no action.
But it could come back if we need to come back to finalizing. But we do have a motion to table it in a second.
It's fine, I can.
So if the plan is to, it's been seconded. So if the plan would be to, if the plan is to take no action, if that is what the committee's pleasure is, you can vote down the motion in front of you and then take no action.
Okay.
It's been seconded at this point.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. So we need to vote on it. So all in favor of?
Table.
Tableting it, say aye. Opposed? Nay. Okay. And now we can take no action. And we don't have to vote on it. Right?
Madam chairperson, too, I can tell you, President Kinch in the US, so they, whatever agreement, we anticipate some action taken by BVP on Monday. Any agreement that I would have to sign, the council would have to approve anyway. So you, you, I would expect that we would tie this all up by the first meeting in October.
Well, we really appreciate you coming tonight and for helping to work, work us through this.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion and or vote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins?
Good evening. Again, I have payment of the bills in the amount of 1,27,305 and 25 cents. Payment of the bills passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Vogel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to zero. Okay, then the last item under new business, discussion of administrative job performance. Dr. Thornton?
I'll sit, Madam Chair. No action.
Madam Chair, that was handled in exact.
Okay, that's a placeholder. That was, no action. Missed that. Okay, next item on the agenda, school committee comments. School liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee?
Mrs. Rogalski, I should probably, like, look. I just want to reiterate again, the great, big thank you to everyone for all the hard work, the staff, the faculty, the administration, Will DeJesus, Mike Chandler, just everything that went into, I don't, I don't think people quite understand, moving one school out of the trans building and moving the other school into the trans building and getting communities swept up and unpacked and unpacking here and unpacking in Garvin and setting. It was a lot of moving pieces that we just watched. We, we didn't help with that part, unfortunately.
Tables on our backs.
Then we didn't have, we did not have tables on our backs. But a huge, massive thank you to everyone who did. It was so much work. And we are so very grateful, as I'm sure are all the other members of the committee and parents and families of the schools. So thank you all.
Other comments? Ms. Smith?
I know, we're all echoing it. And I, Dr. Thornton, I can't thank you enough. I, on a personal level, I, I went to Garvin. I was the first kindergarten class in the town of Cumberland. So I remembered the time vividly because it was such a big news story. And I had the opportunity and took my mother with me. Dr. Thornton gave us a tour before the school opened, showed us everything. And the excitement that you gave, my, my mother was noticing the little details. And she was just so happy to see it. And trust me, she's a critic on everything. So it was, it was amazing, just from the time you were out in the parking lot, you were running around with us, you were showing. And for the first time, I looked and I saw a campus. And I think there's no other way of describing it. If you went to Garvin, if you grew up in this town, if you've gone to baseball games down there, that was never a campus. It was a baseball field and there was a school. And now it connects. That sidewalk, the, the basketball courts, all of the little things that went into it and all of the hard work and pivots that you did, Dr. Thornton, and your team. Absolutely commend you. Really proud of how it's turned out and really looking forward to the finishing of, of the new addition as well, if we can get through all the supply chain issues. So thank you all.
Any other comments? Mr. Fiorello?
Yes, I can, I absolutely agree with everything that everyone has said. I just want to point out two buildings that I think require special thanks. I think Garvin, the teachers there, with the building being unfinished and some hiccups, and also the very late turnover of the building to the teachers and staff. I think they really are, do a gratitude of thanks and for sticking in there and working hard. And, and also for McCourt's staff and families who have gone through the beginning of the school year, which has been less than ideal. And everyone in the district that has worked pitched in together to resolve the issues, just a giant thank you to them as well.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda, vote to go into executive session. We don't believe we have that tonight.
I'll sit.
Okay, next item is adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Rog, Mrs. Rogalski, second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes seven to zero. We're adjourned at 8:50 PM.